We're gonna get started this evening with an invocation from Mr. Bill Howard of Erlanger United Methodist Church.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for allowing me to be here this evening. My prayer tonight is not one of my own, it's one that was given by Peter Marshall back in 1947 when he was chaplain of the United States Senate. So, and it's very appropriate for this evening and for all our days here on council, so if you'll please pray with me. Our Father in Heaven, we pray for the members of this body and their several and shared responsibilities. Help them in their offices, in their committees, and above all, as they may meet here in this legislative session. May they never forget that what is said and done here is not done in a corner, but always under the scrutiny, under thy scrutiny. May they feel the weight of their responsibility towards thee and remember the influence of good example that all come to this place, may have a stronger faith in government of the people, by the people, and for the people. May this mayor and may this council so speak and act that all that wait on them may serve them, may be inspired, rather than disillusioned by what they see and hear and are asked to do. Lord Jesus, make yourself real in these men and women tonight, that each may feel thee sitting beside thee, hear thy voice and win thy approval in all things. So help me God, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. With that, I now call the June 2017 Regular Meeting of City Council to order. I ask that we please rise and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Hoffman, will you please take roll call?
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Cahill?
Here.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Here.
Ms. Cahill?
Here.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Mr. Nicely?
Yep, it's good.
Ms. Fettie?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Here.
We have a quorum. You've received a copy of the minutes of the May 2nd, 2017 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Ms. Fettie. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Alright, now we've got the approval of the agenda. There is one item that I would like to adjust on the agenda. Under legislation, number 10 is a resolution. I would like to move that up to number seven, or just after number six, and Mr. Parsons will explain that later in the meeting. But with that then, you've received a copy of the agenda with that change for the June 6th, 2017 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any other additions to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Alright, we'll move on to our special presentations. First up, we've got a spotlight. We've got Fabio from Tim Hortons here this evening. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Tim. Board of Trustees, ladies and gentlemen, that is a big honor and a big pleasure to be here presenting Tim Hortons for you guys, and it's, we're glad and we're very, very honored to bring Tim Hortons to Erlanger, and bringing investments and bringing jobs to the city. And so, I guess, all you know, we're located here on south of Dixie Highway. We opened it like early this year in January, and again, thanks a lot for inviting us to be here. I mean, a little bit about Tim Hortons, so even though the brand is part of a $30 billion group of restaurants, the secret of success for Tim Hortons for more than six years is being very present in the lives of the communities we have stores, that we have locations. And this is exactly what we're doing and we're planning to do even more here on Erlanger, on other locations on Northern Kentucky, that we're going to build another stores next year. We're doing on Corrine, we're doing on Amelia, that we're opening our third location on the 19th, Oxford, and so on, so we're very present where we have locations. And this is the soul of Tim Hortons, that's why Tim Hortons is so successful. It's a big, big conglomerate of companies, but every single store takes special attention to every community that we're present. Obviously, we have the best coffee in the planet, so I think that you guys, and it's nice to know that, I mean, if you didn't get your coffee dangler, so we have a free month of coffee for everybody here, you're just hanging on your car mirror, and then it's valid on for the whole month of June, free coffee, unlimited, just go to the drive-thru, show the dangler, and that's free coffee for you guys to create the habit of having our coffee. And that's a gift for the community of Erlanger. Obviously, we really believe in our products, top-notch beverages, hot and cold beverages, excellent sandwiches, soup, baked goods, for a very, very attractive price point. So this is what we're bringing to the greater Cincinnati area. In terms of what actions are we doing to the community, you know, so we have Timbity's Sports, this is something that we're pitching with here on Erlanger, to sponsor some youth soccer teams and hockey teams and so on. Tim Hortons Children's Foundation, that's a big one. We're sending, we have a camp in Kentucky here on Campbellsville, which is about two and a half, three hours from Northern Kentucky here. We're sending 100 children to the camp this year, from obviously not just Northern Kentucky, but people from Corrine, Amelia, and obviously Erlanger as well. 100 kids we're funding from QSR7, which is my company, so we're the local art developer, the local master franchisee, as we say. And so that's a big one. And also the Smile Cookie, we're closing a partnership with the Cincinnati Children's, so all the cookies we sell, it's all the money is donated to the local hospital, and we really believe Cincinnati. Cincinnati Children's is doing a great job on that aspect, so we're glad to be in contact with them. So this is pictures from the camp on Kentucky, opened in 2001, it's a great, great facility, and we're sending like, as I said, 100 kids to the leadership program this year. So that would be a great action for us, obviously, to help and to be integrated into the community. Obviously, the Timbity Soccer and Hockey that we sponsorship, and then the Smile Cookies, so that, it's great. And this is, and we're doing, we're actively doing things on the community as well, not just like this kind of presentation, but actually doing things with the Northern Kentucky Chamber of Commerce, we have been members since we opened, and we're sponsoring lots of events with them. Corrine Chamber of Commerce, Canton County, on the libraries, Northwest School District, a good partner of ours on Corrine. Covidon Catholic Drug Free Club Incentive Program, so with discount cards, so there's lots of initiatives we're doing every day, every week, to promote our, I mean, our brand within the community. So, that's it, a little bit about us. So, QSR7, so we're the local franchisee, we're not Tim Hortons corporate, even though I have the head of the new markets here, which is Stephen Goldstein. So it's glad to have you guys here, so they're very active here on our development, and the plan is to have over 100 restaurants here in 10 years' time, so over the greater Cincinnati area, so we have the right to explore and open stores in more than 24 counties, but that's about two and a half million inhabitants living on our geographical area. That will be bringing in like $100 million in investments for the Cincinnati DMA, and like direct job creation of 4,000 people, right? So that's a big one, I hope everybody gets your dangler so you can taste our fantastic coffee, and again, glad to be here and an honor to be presenting to you guys.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I think we found out that if my mic is turned up loud enough, it picks up my stomach rumbling. I'll just talk louder. I'm gonna make another slight adjustment here, I hope you guys will appreciate this. Under introductions, I'm gonna go ahead and move our K-9 officer, Michael Clark, if you wouldn't mind introducing Bodo. I know that he had mentioned that the K-9 might be getting restless. Sorry, Chief.
I just don't want anybody to get eaten up that doesn't need to be.
Right.
He's young, he's full of energy. So I've been getting a little heat in the last couple months from council about not meeting our new people, and it's, we've been in a hiring frenzy now for about six or seven months due to retirements and departures. But this guy, we got, he's been on the road for about two months now, is that right, Mike? Somewhere just short of that, he's had about 12 or 13 arrests. He's getting used a lot, and we were able to buy Bodo due to the Ben Roethlisberger grant that we won last year, so this is Bodo, and this is handler Officer Clark.
I thought I had understood, has he had a vest, donated a protective vest?
They had one ready, they just wanted to make sure they won't leave out October this year.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Around October this year, they're gonna get fitted for one.
He's probably still got a little filling out to do.
Great, great. Thank you, thank you for bringing him this evening.
Alright. Thanks, Mike. Yeah. He uses a, or bark and hold, they're trained to bark and hold, but if somebody resists or attacks a dog, he's gonna do whatever he has to do to seduce him. But he'll chase him and bark and hold. If they don't move or they're not aggressive towards him, he won't bite them. But if they're aggressive or they move towards him or move away from him, he's gonna bite them, yeah. He's cross-trained, he's narcotics certified, as well as patrolled, so he does, he does both. He's one of our smallest, but he's one of our best, so, he's only, what, 80, 85 pounds?
80 pounds?
Yeah. So he's about 30 pounds lighter than our dog a couple years ago. But credible.
I'm gonna take him somewhere and feed him.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Officer Clark.
Beautiful.
Did you want to say anything? So moving back in order here, then, we've got the oath of office ceremony for Sergeant Joe Scroggen. Alright, so I'll go ahead and read through the whole thing, and then you'll say aye do at the end. "I, Joe Scroggen, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of police sergeant according to law, and I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God." Welcome. Alright, so we've got some other introductions here, some of our police recruits. Oh, yeah. Let you off easy, Joe.
Yes, I do want to introduce a couple more. Officer Ernst, Officer Day, Officer Sanchez, had a couple more, but first shift has had an extremely busy day. Oh, you guys are up front, yeah. This is a great example of three of our newer officers, and I want to go ahead and tell City Council that these three officers are all laterals. It was because of the efforts that were put forth by the departments and council to increase the salaries that we were able to attract good quality candidates. Officer Day came to us from the Greater Cincinnati International Airport after doing two years there. Officer Ernst had served with the Elsmer Police Department for a little over four years, I believe. And Officer Sanchez served with the Gallatin County Sheriff's Office for two years, yes. So Officer Sanchez has married, has four children, also married, has children. That's true, all we're doing is we haven't been yet, a couple of are in jail right now, and a couple are off, so I got a few things to say up here, I just wanted to introduce you to, give you a perfect example of the quality that we're attracting because of what we've done here in the city, so we're glad to have them, they're doing a fantastic job, and they stick around, and.
Nice to meet you, yeah, thank you.
So nice to meet you. Welcome to the family.
Welcome to the family.
Oh, no, I know, it's nerdy racket here.
God love him.
Welcome, welcome to our family.
She's beautiful.
And next, we've got our General Government Finance Clerk. Mr. Bodie? Ah, there he is.
Alright, good evening. I'll be brief. We have a new finance clerk, she just came on board. This is Kathy Porter, she comes with just over 20 years of experience from the City of Union, and I'll let her take the stand, so you can say a few words, introduce herself.
That's right, I'm Kathy Porter, and I'm originally from Greenup, Kentucky, in Greenup County, a small city that I'm very proud of. I would just like to thank the City of Erlanger for this opportunity to be part of the team, and I haven't met all of the council men and women, but I have met several of you in the last couple of days, but please stop by the office and chat. And I also want to say that I love my job, I really love what I'm doing, and I love this place, and I love the people, I really do. The staff has just been wonderful, making me feel right at home, and I just want to thank them for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, welcome.
Alright, then we've got Public Works, some new team members.
Yeah, a whole new ball team. Alright, folks, I'd like to introduce tonight two of our newest team members that have joined with us, they are both Erlanger residents, so we're very tickled about that to bring them on board. First, I'd like to highlight Mike Grzel, he started with us in March, he's been married to his wife Jennifer for five years. He and his wife are active members of the Erlanger Volunteer Committee, he's active in his church, he has 10 years of industrial experience and background, certified forklift operator with various other industrial training modules that he's brought about, he's gonna be a great asset to the city, has great attention to detail, so, Mike, welcome aboard.
Thank you. I want to thank the City Council, and also the mayor, and also Rick Bogart for giving them the opportunity to work for City of Erlanger Public Works, it's a great team to work for, and thank you very much.
Alright, next we've got Mr. Chris Johnson with us, so Chris is now the official youngster of the bunch. He has alleviated Sean from holding that role for the past few years, so. Chris started with the team on May 22nd, he is married to his wife Kelsey, he's a resident of Erlanger out on Sycamore Tree, he graduated Boone County High, and grew up over on the Bel Air Court area in Florence, so he's been around for a while, and I believe Ms. Skidmore taught him in Sunday School, if I have all the history correct. So he enjoys his outdoor activities, has an industrial background as well, he is Six Sigma certified, he has a certificate from Gateway for Enhanced Machine Operator Work, and he has two years of diesel mechanic training, so he's gonna be a great asset to the team as well, so I'd like to introduce Chris Johnson.
Like Mike said, I'd like to thank the mayor, City Council, and Rick for the opportunity, all the guys in Public Works Department, they welcomed me in, very friendly, I'd just like to thank everybody for the opportunity, it's been a dream of mine for work Public Works, so I'm glad to have the opportunity and I'm gonna make the most of it.
Thank you, Chris. I'd like to bring up Assistant Director Ed Melikan, and he is going to talk a little bit about the history behind the shirts that we have on and do a little bit more employee recognition, so.
I'd like to bring up Chris Turner. Chris isn't a new member, Chris has been with us since August of 2014, he is the new member of the Facility Services. Chris is gonna be taking over for Rod, Rod's gonna be leaving us here August the 1st, so Chris was kind enough to take over that position. He's a hard worker, real laid-back, easy guy to get along with, I think you guys will really appreciate the work he does. I've seen tremendous work out of him already over the past few months that he's been up here for this transition. So from now on, Chris Turner, starting August 1st, will be our new Facility Services Coordinator.
I'd just like to say thanks to the mayor, the staff, and the council, and the Public Works Department, it's been great so far, and I look forward to many years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Little background on our shirts that everybody's, well, our team members are wearing tonight, the week of May 21st was National Public Works Week, and as you can tell, we believe that Public Works is the heart of every city. This is just a little reminder to everyone that if it's not for the hard work of the men and women in the Public Works Departments throughout the entire country, we wouldn't have the things we have today, things we take for granted. You get up in the morning, you turn on the faucet, you fill up the coffee pot, you're ready for that first cup of joe, don't even think about where that water comes from. Hop in the shower, water goes down the drain, where's it go? Don't even think about it, there's somebody there taking care of that, treating that, to make sure that it's safe to go out into the rivers, streams. You know, these men and women are just fantastic, relentless of what they do, take for instance, for a mere $9.35 a month, somebody comes and picks up your trash, you never have to worry about it again. When you get up, cold morning, hop in the car, make that commute to work on a snowy morning, the roads are clear, it's because guys like these have been out all night in that plow truck, making sure it's safe for you to get to work. Here in Erlanger, we get a lot of compliments on all of our beautiful parks, the great service that the team members of the Public Works Department provide for our residents, for instance, the leaf collection in the fall, our top-notch snowplow service, it's next to none. We all say take care of all facilities, and just like to say, you know, a big round of applause for these guys, they're out there day and night, doesn't matter how cold, how hot, they're out there for the city. You know, the American Public Works Association feels that the Public Works is the heart of every city, we feel that here in the City of Erlanger, we are the heartbeat of the city. Thank you.
Well, under the employee recognition, if I could get all the team members to come up here right now, please, and line up behind us.
Once again, there's one of the behind the scenes.
Yeah. There he comes.
There he comes. Alright, we believe that we are a great team, we believe that we are efficient, and we believe that we are effective, and I know one of us is greater than the other, so as it was mentioned earlier, that we have somebody who's gonna be retiring after an 18-year career with the city. So Rod, if you would join me at the podium, sir. Rodney, I'd like to present this plaque to you on behalf of the team, appreciation and recognition for 18 years of exemplary service and dedication to the city of Erlanger. I want to thank you for all that you've done with this group, and I want to thank you for being a great friend and a great member of the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Made them quite surprised. Yeah, my ears here's been super, look around here, see all the great friends I have met. Two teams, administration people, were super clear to treat me, so if I was the mayor. The guys at Public Works, when I got transferred down there, were top-notch with me, made me feel very welcome. Ralph, my right arm man, he made me, he looked good, so, thank you all. I don't mean he's that ugly, but he did look good. His hard work paid off from making me look good, and I'm sure that Chris is gonna do a super job in my place, he's just gonna have to learn to speak up a little bit, stand a little stronger, and say no when those needs to be said. So with that, I just thank you all.
Thank you, Rod. Alright, I know we're not in order tonight, so since we've got this group up, is it okay if we go ahead and present Jason? I think that'd be great. Okay, awesome. Any other opposition? Jason Ives, come on up. It is hard to believe that tonight, get the honor of recognizing somebody for their service in their retirement, but now, it's hard to believe this young man has been here for 10 years. He is also an Erlanger resident, he is married to his wife Tasha, they've been together, married for... They've been together, married for 16 years, been together for 21 years, so they're childhood sweethearts. Kevin, you're talking about a ball team. He has a ball team at home. He's got Jacob, who is 15, Mitchell, who is 13, Cohen, who is 10, and Kayden, who is eight already. He is a great family man. He coaches in his kids' sports. He's very involved with their lives, enjoys outdoor physical activity, getting out, being outside. You see a future department leader with this young man, I can promise you that. Just very proud of him and thank you for your service, sir. So, honored to present that to you.
Thank you. There are 10 more. All right. Thank you all. All right. All right, so then next, we've got our service recognition. The first one on the list is Mike Jansing, and we don't believe he's present here this evening, is that correct? Yeah, he's not here.
He's at town for one of his kid's weddings.
Oh, okay. We'll have to make a point to recognize him next month, I guess, then. And then we've done Jason, so Steve Bodie.
Mr. Bodie, would you join me up here? As everybody knows, or has been around here for a little bit, this is Mr. Engelman's present to the City of Erlanger. We thank Greg every day for that. We do, we do. He's been with us five years now. This is his first year in the position of Finance Director. I'm happy to tell you that when the audit team was here, they were very impressed when they came into my office. They had nothing but praise for Steve and the job he did this very first year, so I can't say enough about that. He is a go-to guy. If you come and ask a question about finance, this is the man and he has the answer all the time. And I can't tell you how much of a luxury it is setting in the position that I'm in for having somebody like Steve in that position. We're going to try to work on this, okay? But, you know, Steve, when I was, you know, when he first started here and he hung up all this University of Cincinnati stuff around his office, I was a little worried. I really thought that he actually went to UC. But lo and behold, he's a graduate and holds a master's degree from Northern Kentucky University. And you know we beat Bleed Blue around here, okay? Or if it's red, it's the one down in Louisville and not the one across the river on the other side. So, we still go out at that pretty much every day. But Stephen, it's been a pleasure for this five years. I wish you, how many more?
At least 25.
At least 25 more.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say, and again, I'll be brief, these are some pretty kind words, kind of unexpected, Mark, I appreciate it. It's been a blast, these first five years have absolutely flown by and I appreciate all of you guys. It's been great to get to know all you guys and everybody that I work with. It's been an absolute honor and a pleasure to work with everybody, so hopefully for at least 25 more, I'll stick around. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephen. I always liked seeing all this University of Cincinnati stuff. I did go there.
I know.
All right. So then next, we've got Mark Adi.
Chief.
Come on up, Mark.
Mark will be receiving his five-year service pin award tonight. He is an Erlanger kid. They're all kids now to me, I'm at that point, so he is an Erlanger kid. St. Henry through and through. I guess when your father's principal, you don't have much of a say-so in that, so. That had to be awkward in high school, too. I just can't picture that. Mark began as a volunteer in May of 2012. And as many of you are aware, we ended that program in 2013. Mark was one of the, maybe one of the two or three that we had that were active in that program. But when I sat him down to talk that day about that program ending, I sensed his disappointment, I felt his disappointment, but part of me knew that there was something inside of him that this young man really wanted to be a part of this organization. And, you know, I give him a lot of credit. He did what he had to do. Became an EMT, he fought through all the garbage that was out there and all the words and all the things, and he wanted to be a part of this department. And tonight, he's celebrating five years with us. He became full-time three, two years after we had that conversation. And it's to his credit that he's receiving the award, the recognition tonight. I know his parents are here, his fiancee Amanda is here, and I think Batman is in the house. Is Batman in the house tonight? Also known as Landon. But let's please congratulate Mark Adi on five-year awards.
I just want to thank the fire department, first of all, for giving me an opportunity five years ago to get my foot in the door for a full-time job. And then recently getting hired full-time, I want to thank the city council for that. After making it through the fire department process, I had to sit down with city officials and the question came up of where I see myself in five years. Without meaning to sound like a smart aleck, my answer was back in this room getting my five-year service pin. After the laughter stopped, Mr. Field stopped me before I proceeded to elaborate on that answer and told me that was a good enough answer. So, I want to thank you and I thank all of you for this, and I will see you in five years for my tenure.
All right, so moving on on the agenda, we'll move on to the mayor's report. I wanted to make sure everybody was aware that our website is, has rolled out, but it hasn't been necessarily made official yet. I would welcome everybody to take a look at it. It's www.erlangerylky.gov. The old site is still up and running, so if you search Erlanger, Kentucky, the old site is what still pops up. And that's what it'll continue to be until about the end of next week. But check out the new site and give us any kind of constructive criticism or things that we should have on there that maybe we don't or any kind of, anything, so. Coming up in the course of the next month here, I wanted to say thanks to David Hahn, and now I don't see him out there. But he's set up a lot of upcoming business meetings, and I wanted to go ahead and make sure that council felt welcome to these as well. The upcoming dates, if you've got these times, if these dates would work for you, I'll give you more information about who we're meeting with. But Wednesday, June 14th at 1:30, Wednesday, June 21st at 2 o'clock, and Wednesday, July 5th at 2 o'clock, we'll be meeting with some of the local Erlanger businesses. On May 21st, we had over 90 volunteers here who showed up to help with, to distribute the door hangers to spread the word about the heroin hotline. It was amazing to see that kind of response from people that were from within Erlanger and people from all around the county. As it said, many hands make light work, and I know that my family had finished, we finished our assignment in under an hour. And if people are willing to continue to help out and serve, Park Hills is the next one, and that's July 8th at 9:00 a.m. On Memorial Day, we had a great day, a beautiful, we had beautiful weather for the VFW parade. That was a wonderful thing. On Wednesday, May 31st, we had a meeting with Boone County and St. Henry at the Cherry Hill Swim Club. If you remember, last year, we talked about the, a study to do a playground at the Cherry Hill Swim Club. So, we're still working on that and we're working on the feasibility of that still happening, making that small pocket park in that neighborhood. I wanted to let everybody know that the next PDS council meeting is Thursday, June 22nd at 6:00 p.m. And the next District Board of Health meeting is Tuesday, June 27th at 6:00 p.m. That's all I had. Next on the agenda is the reports of committees. Under Public Safety, we've got police, Mrs. Sedkamp, Mrs. Cowell.
Yes. First of all, Sergeant Gerdler graduated from the Academy of Police Supervision at the Department of Criminal Justice Training in Richmond on May 19th, so we want to congratulate him. Also, we gave a new hire test and we have created a new recruit list and we met some of these new recruits tonight. There was a juvenile shooting suspect from Debbie Lane, who was apprehended without incident. And several officers attended retired Officer Tad Langhart's funeral. For those of you who've been in Erlanger for a while, you probably knew Tad. The police worked the Memorial Day Parade and they also put their new Power Wheels car in the parade.
That was so cute.
And it was adorable.
I can't believe it lasted the whole way.
Officer Bodo, who you met this evening, started working the road this month. They used him 17 times. And as you saw, Joe Schoggan is a police sergeant promotion that goes into effect June the 1st. And the bike patrol units were utilized this month for the first two days of the Lions Festival. The high visibility and mobility allowed for constant patrol of the crowds and very minimal need for police services outside of assisting with reuniting a few parents and children that became separated for a while. Bike units also patrolled the parade route on Memorial Day and their presence assisted with intersection control throughout the entire parade. These events allow for hundreds of positive contacts with the public by bike officers. And Chief is in the house.
All right, thank you. Next, we've got then Public Safety, Fire EMS, Mrs. Pitts, Mrs. Petty.
It's another busy month for the fire department. They participated in several training events in the month of May, which included 40 hours in vehicle extrication, I can't say that word, and survival rescue refreshers such as down firefighter in a trappedness structure. They performed over 50 life safety inspections for businesses last month. May was also fire hydrant testing and they had community involvement with Erlanger Elsmere Head Start programs, as well as participating in the parade and other various events. Members of the Blue Shift of the fire department were nominated and won the 2017 Lifesaver Award at St. Elizabeth's EMS banquet for 2017. The members of the Blue Shift were Justin Brinkman, Scott Lewis, Jay Kelly, Mark Adi, and Craig Stewart, so congratulate them. And then Touch a Truck was June 1st, and I talked to Kim, she said it was extremely well-attended. They gave out over 700 helmets that were passed out to kids and Chief is in the house.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, under Public Works, Mr. Cahill, Mr. Skidmore.
Yes, I would like to thank Public Works for the preparation of the highway for the Memorial Day Parade. They've done a great job. And the Touch a Truck, the weather was great, they had a big turnout. And I would also like to thank Mrs. Lyndon Deeds for volunteering time with the fire department. So, everything went great, they had a big crowd.
So, a couple more things. We will be doing a salt bid later on during our bids. I also like everybody to put, remember Dale Wilson, his mother, in your prayers. She passed away this Saturday, that's why he's not here tonight, so. Always hurts when our Erlanger family loses somebody close to them. Something on a positive note, the Public Works Association 2017 rodeo, we were fourth out of 27 on the dumpster. Is that what it was? The dumpster drive, dumpster truck obstacle course, so. Snowplow obstacle course? Essentially, that's what it is. It said dump truck. Didn't you write this thing? I talked about the bids on the salt. We are going to, I want to give this over to Mrs. Pitts right now to talk about Stevenson Road real quick.
Stevenson Road's in progress right now. Just a brief recap as to our discussion at the committee meeting. This is in its infancy stage, but a little history, it was slated to be redone 30 years ago, Stevenson Road was, but the state pulled the funding and allocated it to Georgetown to make way for Toyota, which was moving in in the 80s. The plans still remain in District 6, which gives us a jump on things because the plans can be tweaked and used as a baseline as our committee works with the county and the state highway department to try to secure federal funding for the project. We'll keep everyone updated as things progress, but like I said, right now, it's just in the infancy stage. That's it.
Okay, Operation Banner was discussed at the last committee meeting. It was our recommendation that we not proceed with that, so, and that's what our recommendation is, is that we, I did have an opportunity to go and talk to the historical society, see if they wanted to take that on. At this point, they've kind of backed off and said they wanted to see, so, and they're going to discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Bogart's in the house.
All right, thank you. All right, Administration, Mrs. Skidmore, Mrs. Cahill.
I'm going to start it off. This is a reminder, it says, "Don't forget about the duffel shuffle challenge. The city is an official duffel drop-off location. This program is to help kids in out-of-home care by donating duffel bags. The bags can be new or gently used. You can also stuff the duffel bags with necessity items, sheets, socks, underwear, toothpaste, deodorant, et cetera. Gift cards are also accepted. Duffel bags can be dropped off at the city building Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00 through June the 30th." And then I wanted to elaborate a little bit on the Touch a Truck. The administration booth had their setup and they have the new brochures out for the 12 parks. At one time, there was 13, but it really makes a lot more sense. We've got 12 precincts, we've got 12 parks. They're not all in specific precincts, but it just kind of keeps that number in perspective. And the 13th park that they had, there wasn't access to it, it didn't even look like a park, so it just kind of, everybody kind of agreed together not to include that one. The brochure looks awesome. Joe did a great job. I'm sure that he worked with the, some of the other ones to get this job done. Kim Woking, I'm sure, had a large part in it. And I believe, didn't they pass out bags, Kathy, that had the, that had the new logo on there?
Yes, they did.
So, and Ms. Deeds helped with the fire department, she helped in that booth. I think that's amazing that she's not on council, but yet she helped out with that. And I guess that's, I guess that's all I have.
We have our upcoming events for the City of Erlanger, and we have June the 6th through June the 29th, every Tuesday and every Thursday from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. They will be at the Depot Park, and these programs are in partnership with the library and will include different theme programs every Tuesday and Thursday. The activities will be educational, hands-on, and interactive. The schools will also be providing free lunches and the museum and caboose will be open afterward. And the free lunches are for those up to 18 years of age, and I think if you're over 18, you can purchase a meal at a minimal cost. And then on June the 8th, the Honey Hill Petting Zoo will be at Rainbow Park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Honey Hill will provide a petting zoo and Erlanger Elsmere Schools will provide free dinners for everyone 18 and under. Adults can purchase a meal, it's 250. The library will be there promoting all their summer programs. And on June the 17th, we have the youth fishing derby at Flagship Park. It's 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. The Kentucky Fish and Wildlife Department is lending us their equipment for residents to use. We will have a raffle and breakfast and snacks. And on 6:30, Sing the Movie and a petting zoo at the Flagship Park. We will start the night with a petting zoo, followed by the movie Sing. There will be free popcorn and drinks and Kona Ice will be available for purchase. And at the committee meeting, we had the city logo discussed and it was sent around to all council. They like the colors blue and gray, they want to add the 1897 to it, and they want to not have a slogan yet. They want to think about it, add it later, but we need to have the original logo out right away and it'll be the state of Kentucky and it'll be blue and gray for, we discussed this at the committee meeting. But no slogan right now because we're kind of debating what we want for the slogan.
On that, the city logo, I mean, I guess it's for everybody, I just remembered that we have an ordinance that says what the city logo is, do, should we repeal that and just get rid of it? It's the same as what's on the flag out there, the blue and red? Red, white, and blue?
And the way that ordinance reads is it only applies to administration, and anything that comes out from general government and on our official letterhead, that's, that's what it were, and it was adopted, oh, I can't remember when we went through the codification, but it's been several, several years ago, so it probably does need to be updated and/or that one repealed, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Frank would know this better than anybody, I'm sure, but is there a reason why we'd have an ordinance that establishes that?
I, I'm not aware of any, and I don't know that it has to be done by ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking, if we just, just get rid of it and...
Yeah, because we, we would have to go back and create another one when we put a slogan on it, then?
Yeah, right.
We can just, whenever you adopt what you're going to adopt, whatever that is, you can just include a provision that, at the same time, you'd have to have an ordinance that repeals the existing ordinance, but you just do them together simultaneously.
Okay, so we just can't get rid of it, period, and then?
Yeah, we can get rid of it.
No, no, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, okay, like, we don't need an ordinance that we can update whenever we want to or something?
We don't really, don't even have an ordinance that says what the, what the logo is.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay.
Okay, and then the other thing on our list is Committee Meeting Procedures, Committee Meeting Report, we're going to defer that to Randy, and maybe he can do that under Finance. Does that sound okay, Randy?
I don't think we're doing anything with it, so.
Okay.
Right, right, that's, that makes sense.
That's the end of our report then.
Okay, thank you.
Cherry's here.
Cherry?
I don't have anything.
Okay, then we've got Finance and Business Development, Mr. Blankenship, Mr. Montgomery?
Thank you. The second reading of the ordinance is to adopt the amended budget for fiscal year 2017, and the new budget for fiscal year 2018 are on tonight's agenda, and a copy of the final budget document has been distributed to each of the council members for your records. Also, the finance staff has begun preliminary work to prepare the city books for the fiscal year 2017 audit. Just one other thing, also, at the last council meeting, someone raised a question...